All right, thank you all for coming. We'll open the meeting 6:30. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Thank you. Chip, we don't have anyone joining us online either? Anyone, would either of you two young ladies like to make a public comment?
Not tonight, anything.
No, not tonight. All right, thank you for that. So we'll move on to item number three, just for the record, I'm four minutes ahead of schedule already. So, item number three, staff response to questions about Lower Well and CSO project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
A few questions about the Lower Well CSO. Last or earlier this month, we covered the importance of the project, the significance of solving the CSO, complying with the state order, and how the 500,000 gallons would solve the vast majority of those school events that we do receive. It's a big step forward. And we got a few good questions, one being, should we take the opportunity to make it bigger than 500,000 gallons? Can it be expanded in the future? And should we wait on the bond vote so that it's not competing with the city budget and the school budget? So, as to the first question, there aren't a lot of economies to scale to making the project bigger right now. It's pretty much a one-to-one increase for both the more soil management, for the more soil that we'd have to excavate, plus the concrete sections that we have to buy to make it bigger. The engineers didn't think that there's really going to be much of a bulk buy on those items. We would save a little bit on mobilization, but it's not very significant. And then also, you know, the Houghton project, the way it's designed, really fits into the available site and is least disruptive to the traditional uses of the park right now. If we made it any bigger and it started creeping toward the north, we'd have to move the whole Steelers field because there are some manholes and vents that come along with this that would get into their ends up. So, I think, plus there are other sites where I think we could put some of this other CSO storage if we find that we need more than the 500,000 gallons. We're looking at another one right now. I think we go with this project, 500,000 gallons, and it's going to buy us a lot of time in the state. We see how they react to the fact that we've made this step forward. That was just the first question. The second one was, can this be expanded? If we decide to expand the system after it's installed, it can be expanded. So, the answer to that question is yes. If we go with the 500,000 gallons now, and then we find for some reason our best option, we need more storage, and our best option to expand the system, and we really, you know, we committed to further encroaching in the Houghton Park, then yeah, we could do that for sure. So that is an option. And then the third question about holding off. We're already going to be bidding later than we'd like for this construction project. And there were three sort of arguments about sticking to town meeting day. To counter the very good argument about not hurting ourselves in the budget. And one is that if we wait a month or so, it probably will result in higher bid prices proposed if we wait another month to delay our going up to bid. The second thing is that the longer we wait, the less time we give ourselves. If there is a no vote to this bond item, and we feel like we want to pivot and maybe make some changes, but also go to the voters and make the case. Like, maybe we didn't make the case well enough the first time. If we wait another month, we're just putting ourselves months back and back in terms of scheduling, rescheduling those votes. And the third thing is that that really gets us up against running out of the time to spend the $2.8 million in ARPA money that we have to go toward this project. So those are the answers to those questions.
2.8, what's the deadline on that?
It's October of 2026, and then December of 2026. And it's a project that's aimed to start in August of this year and continue through next year.
Is that... Does the funds have to be spent?
Yes, expended.
And this will be paid for in part from the user fees?
Right.
Or fully?
Yeah. It's about a $6 million, it's about a $6 million project. We have $2.8 million, $2.8 million in the ARPA grant right now. And then we've got a million dollars that we're going to apply to the SRF fund, the DEC fund. And those are the loans and grants that are typically paid back by the wastewater fund on projects like this. But a million dollars that will be granted to us. That leaves about the 4 million in... That's actually, so that's part of the 4 million that's in the bond item. But really, what we're looking at is probably only going into real debt for 3 million. So that would be the SRF, the State Revolving Fund loan. And depending on the availability of funds, we also still may be eligible for some subsidy of that $3 million loan. But long and short of it is that any debt associated with this project will be paid for with the wastewater funds.
And are we going to be impacted potentially by anything going on in Washington right now?
Just as much as anyone else. But for all I know, the state might already have these funds.
Do you think the warning, as presented in this night's packet, explained enough regarding the ARPA funds that are going to be contributed? I know you put the two figures in there. I don't know who drafted that, either you or Dominic. I know you put two figures near the 68 and the 4. But was it clear that 2,800, 2.8 million was coming from ARPA? Do you think that was explained well enough in there? Can we sharpen that pencil a little bit?
And do people even know what ARPA funds are?
I'd like to be able to say something like 2.8 million something, whether we call it ARPA or not, and a possible million in grant. I think it makes the warning more attractive for a yes vote than it would the way it currently sits.
And it shows that you, we as a city, went out of our way to try to access other monies instead of...
I mean, typically, we cover some of that in the materials, the promotional, educational materials.
Which nobody's going to read.
Many points well taken, that said. It's bond council, they have to certify it.
Yeah.
And so it's a little bit different than our usual relationship with the lawyers. So this is scrubbed by them. I mean, mine was about three lines.
Yeah.
And so, they're the ones that... So we can go back to them, but I think we might just end up right back here.
An unknowing voter might take a look at that and give it a wrong read.
Because it doesn't really say anything about that. I don't, unless I'm...
It doesn't say anything about the million or the 2.1.
Just that there's $4 million.
So, I think that could be read wrong. I mean, not that I... I mean, I just, number one, I really don't like it going on the morning at all this time around, but I guess I'll live with it.
That's a subject to reduction by state and federal grants?
Would you love to put like a poster up out front, day of voting, just the information about this?
Yeah.
We've done that before. Chip's been out here.
I was thinking like a nice, you know, since what it's all about.
Chip had a nice storyboard before and asked any questions, but already he was out there with him maybe for another project.
Stuff like a storage chamber.
But if we don't do it, if we don't do it, the cost could increase in the future, and we will continue to have sewer overflow and flooding down in that area.
We're subject to violations, fines, and consent decrees that will be, you know, like, we'll be violating the state environmental permit, probably EPA directive as well.
Let me go get a lap back, keep talking.
Okay. There's probably a way to... The bond council really thinks the total cost of the project needs to be in the morning. But I think Dominic hinting, there might be a way to say, do the voters approve $4 million in indebtedness? $1 million, $1 million or more, which potentially could be forgiven in the form of grants? This is part of ultimately a $6 million project that's also being supported with other grants.
Well, I don't think we have to limit it like that because I'm worried that if we put it that way, the way you just said it, and we don't get the grant, does that mean that a person would not have voted yes? If we could say, of which the city is basing this on a possible $1 million grant, and a definite 2.1, you know what I'm trying to say?
With possible state and federal grants of more than $1 million, I mean, it's possible.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't like, I don't like, you know, I think putting the...
Because if that works, it's 3 million then, right?
Yeah. It's too bad that they don't just allow us to word it plain English.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, right.
Or people who will...
In fact, I think that entire thing is one run-on sentence if I'm not...
It just doesn't say anything about the, I mean, other than the few words that Trudy just mentioned. It doesn't say anything about the, we're putting in, we have 2 million already that we need to get rid of, and we've got another million that we might get. And so, the voter max is 4 million. The voter max is going to be 4 million.
And that's like a worst-case scenario. That's like if we don't get the grant, we're pretty much assured of getting it. It's a special PC grant that is specifically available for projects like this.
Sorry, I don't mean to make this harder on you, it is. I just, out of read of that, I just said to myself, this doesn't, someone can mistake, they're going to spend another 6, 8 million, 2.1 million on top of the budget?
Yeah.
I think that's what someone might say. We know what it is, but we're doing this, you know, a couple times a month.
Does this need to be paid for with...
I had one sort of problem about your stuff, honestly, but I think a lot of people won't call to find out.
I don't think it does say.
You have a copy of it, right?
So we can move on.
Yeah.
Just one other question. Did you say that payments for the bond would be out of the enterprise fund?
Yes.
So it's not going to be on the property tax?
Right. Maybe that's something else.
I think that needs to be on there. Because that's, to Tim's point, if the perception is that this school tax and our budget are all on the property tax, it's going to be...
You would have loved my original note.
That they said no to?
So I think at some point, it has to mention that it comes out of the enterprise fund.
Yeah.
But people need to know what the...
Right.
We could write a whole album, enterprise funds, which are paid for by both city and town.
We just removed the line.
It doesn't say.
So we could say that the article does not affect the school tax rate. We couldn't say that in ours because they said that was against the rules. This kind of burden on that, but they're not us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I've seen that on school budgets so often.
I have thought that.
I think so too.
I've definitely seen that. This has no impact on...
Yeah. You mean the...
I don't know why.
When you do like the tax... Yeah, like the tax anticipation, no type thing usually.
Yeah, it has to remove for the school, and same can say it doesn't impact the school tax rate.
Get it out of the way.
I know, it's like just... Yeah.
Well, we already approved it, we already approved it at the last meeting, right? So we're just getting, we're just getting some responses from... It was probably premature for me to bring that up because we're going to be talking about the warning, item six, but it tees it up a little bit. But, you know, as far as, I know, I think we've already approved that last meeting, the CSO project. So, I mean, I'm satisfied with Chip's responses to, at least my question, whether I should, we should run this.
I know those neighborhoods are excited about it, and those knocking on doors.
The neighborhood, yeah, I bet.
They're pretty excited.
Wastewater funds in there.
Yeah, it just has a question mark at the end, which is weird.
What? That's a question.
Because it has to be...
Oh, you thought it was wastewater fund, question mark, lady making...
Are we doing that?
Yeah, right.
I got it, I got it. I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. That was dumb.
No, I get what you're saying. This sentence is not great.
What's the lead time between when we have to have this done by someone printing stuff?
We can get it done tonight.
Just as I was wondering today, so I was asking.
Yeah, it's a long warning time, multiple warnings.
I know, yeah.
We're short of...
How much is ARPA?
Give the three.
Okay, let me look that up.
I'm just bringing that up, we don't have to do this, you guys don't want to.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea because I think it's more likely that people will vote yes for it if they know all the information about additional dollars that we've applied for.
Just knowing who does command their town meeting day.
Yeah.
The more down-to-earth subject, not having all these big words, will be more likely for everybody to understand.
Yes, user-friendly.
User-friendly, yeah.
Although it has...
And not everybody will stop and read a poster or whatever, they're going to be reading this while they're down there voting.
Yeah.
And if they don't understand, then they're going to sit down, or they'll leave a blank.
Right, because some people won't feel comfortable asking it.
Yeah.
And then they'll all come ask me what it means, and I can't tell them.
You can.
I can't tell them anything. When they're down on the voting floor, I can't tell them.
Can you say, "Come to my office all night"?
No.
Go talk to Chip.
I can't say, "Go talk to Chip."
Dom, I'm just wondering, do you have payments?
I know.
Revenues generated from the wastewater fund payments.
You got $1 million.
All right, are we...
Yeah.
Are we set? Are we set on that, Dom?
For now.
For now? All right. So we're going to move on to item number four, council discussion of the budget. Maria, I think I'm going to turn that over to you.
Well, I looked at this budget, and I saw 9.6 just jumped out.
2.8.
It, 9.8?
Sorry. We're sorry, we're passing no.
Okay, okay. It's a sizable increase, and I don't, I don't think that there's a lot of fluff in this budget at all. I really don't. I think it was very consciously, you know, decided, and I think it, you know, I think it's a good budget. I think that the police department portion of it is responsible for the biggest part of it. We need that, and I, a thousand percent behind that part of that. My concern is that I represent probably not the wealthiest part of town. And I think that a lot of my constituents are at the point of, it isn't that they don't want the budget, it's that they can't pay anymore. I think that the timing, as far as the budget goes, is, because it piggybacks on what we went through last year with the state and the high education tax. And I think, you know, besides everything else going up, I think that this is, you know, just another one of those shots that are going to impact a lot of people. I mean, a lot of people are fixed income or low income. And especially down where I live, it's the way it is. You know, we live where we can afford, and I think that, you know, it's a pretty sizable increase. I really don't know where to suggest to do any cuts. I guess I just needed to, need to voice my concern about it because I just, I think it's just, I don't know if it's the timing or what, you know, the same as we're talking about this other project here. But I think that people are just like, not again. The flip side of that is, I totally realize this city has been wonderful as far as keeping our tax rates low the past few years. I mean, that's, that's an incredible feat in my opinion. And I don't know if there's any room for a little bit of adjustment on this budget, but if there is, I'd like to see us explore that a little bit, maybe investigate it or whatever. So I just kind of want to throw that out there. It's, you know, people are pretty strapped, and I think that, you know, it's just another, it's just another high expense. And we have a great city, we have a lot to be proud of here, and we've had a great, I think a great conscientious finance part of the city. And, but I think, you know, the bottom line is, they look at numbers. And so, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there.
I was on the board, or the council, long before it had the $100,000 budget stabilization funds going in the water, in the wastewater. And I was on it with Jeff, geez.
Young.
Jeff Young. And we just said, "No way." It's just, we, there's no way, we cannot do this. We've got to present it to the public because the cost of not doing it in the next few years will probably be more out of their pocket than if they did do it. And it was one of the best things we ever did. That was, what, 12, 13, 14 years ago? And it really worked out well. And when we talked about the police budget, to me, because I thought about it too, I said, "Wow." Years and years, we've said, "Well, we're going to keep it at 1%. We're going to be level funded, we're going to keep it at 2%." We tried to knock things off. And I think every time we did that, we knocked a little bit off the police department. And I think we're paying for that now. If this was next year, and we were looking at 9.6, and I was sitting on this panel, and we got no return out of what we just are funding the police department, I'd be looking to chop some things. But I think right now, for me, it's, I'm afraid what will happen if we don't do it. We've asked this time for all the departments, and all the staff to come in and hold the law so that we could make this one adjustment to the police department budget. We re-ruined Channel 6, but Channel 3 News tonight, anyone watch that?
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. Yeah. And, yeah, it was. And I was proud of it.
Who was, who was on?
No, Dominic was on, but it was just commentary right from the news desk. And I just think that, to be able to talk to somebody and say, "Look, I think if you can't take the $100 bucks or the $120 bucks," I think that was the estimate, Sarah, we could be paying more of that, more than that out of our pocket in the next year or two if we don't do this. And that's why, because I'm traditionally for it, you can go back to all the budget hearings, all the budget meetings, I'm one of the slashers, really am. And, but this time, I just, that would be what I would say to my folks if they had asked me some things. I mean, and I had, and I went around, because I had to get signatures. I only had one day to get the signatures, and I forgot about it and it cold reminded me. And I went to Florida Friday, just got back yesterday, and it was due yesterday at five. So, I went around, and I was able to, I called it my political day. And I went around, and I heard a lot of people talking about, you know, certain things that I'll bring up throughout this meeting tonight. But one of them was, "We're glad what you're doing in the police department."
Is there still, for some folks, income sensitivity on your tax bill from the city? So if people are on a fixed income?
Yes.
Is that, so, can, because I...
But it's not for the municipal side, it's only the education side.
Only, but that's a huge part of it. So on the education side, if people don't have a lot of income, they might not pay the full education tax rate on their property tax bill.
And if you're going to use low enough, it does get to the usual use side as well.
Okay.
It's HI 144 is the form. You have to have the HS 122, which is the homestead, so it has to be a homestead. It has to be a homestead in order to get that benefit, you can't be a renter.
And do people see that right on their tax bill?
Yes, they do.
Does it come like off?
Yeah, it says gross taxes, state payment, which is reduction, and the net amount due to the city.
Okay.
I don't get one either, if that's what you're trying to say, because I never see it.
But I think for some people, like who are retired or on fixed incomes, I think it's important to pay attention to that when folks are looking at their tax bills, that they might not be actually paying what they think they're paying because of the rebates. One question I did have, and I know it's too late this time around because the police budget is, like, it's already approved. When we look at the percent increase, is that across the board? Like, for salaries, the 8%, is that everybody from the new person right out of the academy to the person that's been there for 20 years? Is the 8% for everybody, no matter where they fall?
Generally. Cost of living adjustment to the base.
So I guess, in the future, I would, like, not that education is the model for financing, but in education, if we need to get more young teachers, we might put 8% at the bottom. It's never 8% for teaching, just so we're clear, but maybe 4% for the bottom of the folks, and then maybe someone who's been there, like me, for 30 years, and I'm at the top of the pay scale, maybe I get a little bit less. So I think that, I think that we need to start looking at, like, it's not, it doesn't need to be 8%. Like, for somebody who's been at the police department for 25 years, probably making, I don't know how much money.
Well, I don't think it's going to be 8% every year. I mean, all we're doing is trying to get back to level ground, so moving forward.
Right. But when I'm hearing about the increases in Milton, I'm hearing about the people coming out of the academy. Those folks in Milton are going to make more than our people coming out of the academy, and I get that. I think we also need to be looking at the top of the, like, what does their chief make? What does our chief make? What does their, you know, second-in-command make? You know, like, looking at more than just...
That's what they did though, because of, you know, you've got officers, you've got corporals, you've got sergeants.
Okay.
You've got special assignments, and all those recognize the seniority, and there's steps in between more than just 8%, right? So there's an 8% to the base.
So some people at the top are getting more than 8%?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but...
Okay.
Your police department's led from the top.
Oh, I get it, I get it. Like, I understand, I just...
They're just, you know, your points well taken, I'm just, I don't... It's hard to transfer the principle into that, into that culture in the way police departments...
Education is just set up very differently.
It's really different. I mean, I would love to have police departments be more like education in many ways.
Yeah, years plus credit time.
Right, so I just think, like, I'm making a decent salary now, but my first-year teacher isn't. I, if I have this chunk of money as an education system, sometimes we put it down at the bottom so we get more young people, and I just keep hanging out at the top.
I think one important thing, too, to remember, as far as the city goes. So when we went to the meeting, they have a ton of things that are out of date, expired, best, tear gas, both. And the town kind of ponyed up a chunk of cash for that. So, the other thing to keep in mind about the police budget is that the city taxpayers are still paying less now for the police than we were before the town got on. The last year the town got on, the burden to the taxpayer for our police department is higher than what it is this year. So we're still getting a deal because of the merger, and we're getting a lot more, we're getting a lot better police.
No, I understand that, and I also know that every year, we can't give 8% raises, and we're cutting things from the city budget in order to support the police department, which I understand, and I love our police department, and we need them. And I also, it feels weird to have to say, like, in order for us to have this, we need to cut this, 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 and this from the city budget. It feels, I don't know.
Well, I think the thing people need to be aware of, this is an adjustment year. I mean, we're not looking at, I...
What was it, last year?
I would hope we're not going to look at 8% every year on this. Tim, I hope so too, but we've had it the last three, and I've been able to shield the taxpayers from it. Right, but we, but now we've made the adjustment, right? In terms of, in terms of the police salaries.
Off the top of your head.
8%. Eight percent.
So it's not an anomaly.
Last year it was six and two, this year it's eight and two.
And our contracts were how long, one year?
One year. You know, I mean, I, I mean, while we're getting a bit far in the book, I think. Sarah's got some ideas for how to respond to Marie's concerns. That'd be worth, I think, diving into. We've changed anything about the police. And, you know, I think our strongest recruitment tool is the experience that we're offering. It's a stable department that doesn't need to do ridiculous raises to attract people. And we've got great professional development opportunities, you know. Big enough for people to, to grow their career here, but small enough to be a stable department that doesn't swing year to year. There's some political reasons.
Could I say one more thing, Tim? Another thing is. Another way to decrease our payment to something that we want to increase. Is to bring people into our area. And grow our grand list. And I sent, I knew this conversation was gonna happen tonight a little bit. And I sent for some information this morning. And what, in the last two years, we've increased our grand list by what, fourteen, eight? And we've got a potential for another thirty-eight million next year and the year after. Uh, that's increasing our in, so that we can pay less. And if we keep doing that, we get to utilize that benefit.
More people needs more police and services though.
Not necessarily. It doesn't necessarily equate to it, to, to be that way either. I Googled that. You can, you can Google that too.
Okay, I, I trust you, but in my brain, it's like more people, more services, right?
And, uh, yeah, like, uh, our increases are coming in small areas, small blocks. It's not like a, a bunch down there, a bunch down there, a bunch down there. It's all like the Fonda place, the Bellevue Center. You know, up here on Conger Street, you know, uh, down there on Lake Street. And so, the, the, I mean. I'm not gonna say that everyone's gonna bring in the same amount of income, but the more people we're having, the, the more taxes are gonna be, you know. Uh, are available to people because there's more people utilizing, uh, services in the city and utilizing, uh. Uh, the downtown and the things that our, our businesses thrive on. So I think more people to us is.
The local option tax is just one, one piece of it. Marie, I think in your discussions, uh, so Sarah was nice enough to run the past three, counting this year. So you may have seen this, twenty, FY twenty-four increases two point nine percent. Last year, point six, and then obviously this year could be as high as nine point five. But the average is four percent. Uh, over the three years, which is, I don't know what the cost of living was, but it's definitely less than inflation. So I think that's something that we have to reinforce as well, that we've been, we as a council have been conscientious and administrations have been conscientious of. Uh, of the past two or three years and now. As, you know, it's just, we need to level the playing field. If you take the police department, I'll, you're at three, I think, three percent on the operating budget.
That was negative. Could I, can I join in?
Luckily, the school budget is, is low this year, thankfully.
Have we heard what the school budget number is?
Things like down to two percent, is what I heard.
Yeah, two percent and Bill spoke at Rotary. Bill Kimball, and he said that it, it's gonna be warned as, as a two percent in cost increase. It will, um, I think they're gonna ask. I think it's gonna, something about four point five percent is gonna come into play there.
Sarah, how about it? Sarah, how about it?
So, um, Marie, thank you for your comments and for your feedback. Um, after you and Dom chatted. He and I took another look at the budget and I do think that there are three spots that we could make, uh, some changes to bring. The proposed tax levy down by a percentage point without, you know, without hurting ourselves. In the future. One of those is, I had proposed in the budget that we start paying down on the short-term debt that we're holding. To purchase the Weldon Theater building. I proposed twenty thousand dollars. We could eliminate that entirely or just reduce it. Which would allow us a little bit more time to figure out what we are going to do with that facility. Uh, and if paying down the debt is the right way to go. The second thing is, I've been working, uh, my team has been working to evaluate all of our telephone lines and. Alarm lines and I've learned all sorts of things about telecommunications I never wanted to know. But one of the things that has come out of it is we've already been able to cancel some unused lines at a fire station. Uh, to the tune of four thousand eight hundred dollars a year. So that cancellation is effective now. We'll have some of those benefits in fiscal twenty-five. And that is an actual reduction into the twenty-six budget. So those have been budgeted in, in the last draft and they can now be removed. So that is. Uh, about twenty-five thousand dollars total reduction on the expenditure side. And then as we discussed the last time I was here, I was on the conservative side with revenues on the recreation department. Recreation Department just opened a new section of summer camp over at Collins Park Complex. That's, uh, gonna be the confidence to increase those revenues. And so I have, I'm proposing that we bump up recreation revenues. For a total reduction in the property tax levy of fifty thousand dollars, which would reduce, which would pull one, a full percentage point. Off of that property tax levy. And the property tax levy increase year over year would be eight point five, down from the nine point five to nine point six. The impact to, um, a home assessed at two hundred thousand dollars, which is about our average residential assessment, is one hundred and eighty dollars. On the year. This takes the overall budget increase down to five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Recall, seven hundred and ten thousand is police. And everyone else has come together with reductions of one hundred and seventy thousand total, including the elimination of two full-time positions. Those are my suggestions. I, I, uh, Tim, I appreciate your comment. Tim Hawkins, I appreciate your comments about. Um, thinking about the impact in future years. And these are three spots that I think we could make a change. Uh, that would not hurt our forward movement. Happy to discuss those.
Well, first of all, I appreciate your, your effort in that because I think, you know. It, it's a good faith effort and I think that, you know. I think people hopefully will appreciate that. So, um. And I, you know, and I, and I feel bad because like I say, I, I know this, this budget, it doesn't have a lot of flow. I mean, this is, it is what it is. And you guys all raised some great points. So, um, I, I do appreciate your work in reducing.
Kinda like paying off debt though.
I like two or three, but not one. I was gonna say that myself.
That is, I mean, that isn't a lot.
I, I agree with you, Tim. I think two or three are great. As long as we think we can hit the, the rec production. But getting rid of some debt.
What's the interest?
It's two percent. It's very low. Uh, generally, I feel, you know, I lead the same way, but we have to remember that. Our access to capital is one of our strengths and our overall, um, development and economic development strategy in the city. And so. I, it would be great. I love, I like to see those numbers go down as well. Um, but, you know, I hate this one. It is open for discussion.
So to, to that point, do we have any bond payments that are expiring this year? And when, when finance does the budget, do you look at that?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, we got one, what do we have going away? We have something big going away this year. Uh, we'll be hitting the budget next year.
It was the assessment.
The assessment will be off.
Something, it was something large.
The debt service budget is, is line by line every single note, you know, with actual.
Something's coming off.
Uh, one of the pickup trucks is dropping off.
Was it the seat, the, it was, it was in SIP, right? The CIP? Was it CIP? Where that was gonna come, where the.
Are, is it the reappraisal? Reappraisal will come off in twenty-seven.
Yeah, that might have been it. How much was it? What was it?
Like a one hundred and fifty-five.
That was, that was in a bond.
That's not a bond, but that'll go into next year.
And there is a truck coming off.
There is a truck coming off. And we delayed reappraisal at five fifty.
But I think in a nutshell, and I, I, I've shared this with everyone but Marie for you to, so. You do have items coming off, um, I think it's at twenty-seven for the appraisal. And you have, uh, real estate coming on the grand list. So there should be some balance moving forward. Of course, it all depends on what the, what we face for expenses, but. I think between the increase in the grand list and maybe some reduction of the, of some expenditures. Fixed, fixed expenditures, we should be sitting well next year and the following year.
It's also important to reiterate the fact that the last couple of years, the city's done a great job keeping it down, especially with the population fund changes. So four percent over three years versus the nine percent portion that we've felt in the last couple of years, we weren't trying to be as conservative as we were. Considering the fact that we still will have possibly, depending on how things go moving forward, uh, for some of the police in the future.
I think that is the biggest shock, right? You've been so, you've been so low. That you see like an eight or nine percent, you're like, wait, what? This sounds unusual.
I would also, there was many things outside of our control. I mean, when you look at COVID and other expenditures over the years. Uh, the increase in construction costs, increase of fuel, energy, all that stuff, so. Yet, yet we were still able to, to maintain those, those levels. So are we, anyone have any other questions for Sarah?
I think we have to decide on that number one, right?
No, no. Any more questions on the?
I do have one more thing I'd like to share with you related to the budget. Uh, the, the messenger reported on the budget presentation after the last time and there, and there was an inaccuracy about the Weldon Theater. This has been corrected on the online article. I'd like to reread it. The original article suggested that the Weldon itself was losing two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And this information has circulated out to the community. Um, the messenger has corrected the article, but I want you all to know. That that was not correct. That was the overall recreation number. So overall recreation is reliant on the tax rate for about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that the Weldon is actually, um, is, is doing well. It's still, it's still reliant on the tax dollar, about sixty-five thousand dollars in this budget. Uh, but we are seeing strong attendance and recharge over there.
Nice catch. I did get a call about that too.
Hi, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks for your work.
We need to vote on that?
Yeah, we voted on the budget already. Oh, you mean taking those off? Taking those three off?
So the warning that you have in front of you has those three items in you. I'd take it to eight and, eight and a half. If you wanna do something different, Sarah's gonna run the numbers. And then we'll get the warning true to. So have a vote on what you wanna do.
What would it be if you added the twenty grand back in for the, for the Weldon?
Eight point nine percent.
Still an eight and not a nine.
That is true. That is true.
I mean, it's gonna get paid sometime.
Well, you were gonna, you were, you were setting up yourself for what, twenty-eight year or twenty-five a year or something like that?
Yeah, twenty thousand a year to start chipping away at it until we decided. We're gonna keep it or blow it or sell it or.
My brothers would be to keep it in there. Get it, get it paid, get, start getting it paid down.
Keep the pay, keep the payoff in it.
Yeah, keep, keep the twenty thousand in the budget.
And that brings us to eight point nine percent.
Yes, on the tax levy and a even four percent on the bottom line.
Alright, anyone wanna make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that, uh. Pursuant to the memorandum by the finance director, items two and three are. Two and three are, are taken off the budget and number one is left in the budget.
I second.
Motion second. Any other questions for Sarah? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to covered five. I would consider the adoption of the town meeting warning. Would that be you, Nicole?
Uh, that's me. So we got the budget done, um. Let me read you a revised warning for the CSO.
Nicole's real name is Nicole, not Nicole, okay?
It's the French. Everybody has any sort of French in this city.
Which I do, which I do.
Is this any better? Shall the city of St. Albans issue general obligation bonds? In an amount not to exceed four million. For the purpose of constructing an underground storage tank within Hilton Park. To address combined sewer overflows on Lower Weldon Street. Total cost of such improvements being six million, eight hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred. With reductions of three point eight million anticipated through grants and debt forgiveness. From the state and federal governments and the bonds to be paid by the users of the wastewater system. Does that help?
I think it's clear.
Is it? Is it payable to wastewater system or that's part of the stormwater fund?
Wastewater. The CSO is a wastewater liability. The stormwater, the stormwater utility actually treats the stormwater from the separated system, not the combined one.
So we don't need to add stormwater to that earlier.
Can you just read that end of that sentence or where it's, you, starting with the six, eight, ten, nine hundred? To be paid for or what, however you.
With reductions of three million, eight hundred thousand. Anticipated through grants and debt forgiveness from the state and federal governments. And the bonds to be paid by the users of the wastewater system.
And the bonds.
To be paid by the users.
Said bonds to be paid by. Right? Said bonds to be paid by the wastewater system. Yes, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's. No, well, I don't know about that.
Dom, do you have a question mark at the end there?
That's why I said system?
Yeah, there is, you have to raise your voice when you're asking a question.
You don't need approval of that, right?
So the approval and the motion is for the warning itself. And then we'll print the revised one circulating.
Everybody got their signatures? Word one, I mean, I know I did. Word two and six? Newell?
Do we have someone who is, that's running into his place?
Alright, so are we, uh, we're gonna approve that?
Motion to approve the warning as amended and presented, or presented in amendment.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Dom, for that. Thank you all.
Will everybody deal to sign that before we head?
We're gonna sign it tonight. Sarah's gonna print it.
How's that? Do you have letterhead or half? No, I don't have access to your printer, so I'll just.
We still have to approve the full, uh, warrant, right? That was this one? That was this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the next one.
So these are just related to your bond vote. Dom says it's necessary, and others says that you intend to use the money for what we talked about.
The necessity one, right?
Necessity says it's necessary.
Yeah.
And the declaration says what you're gonna do.
So we'll, I'll second.
I'll make a motion to adopt the necessity resolution.
Second.
Any questions of the necessity resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, uh, adoption of the necessity resolution.
I make a motion to adopt the declaration of official intent.
Second.
A motion second to adopt the declaration of official intent. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, can I just go back on, uh, one thing? I just, this came to my mind. I think I said it the wrong way. Uh, when I made the motion, uh, for, uh, on the budget, I didn't mean, uh, to take the other, I said, uh, I made the motion that we, uh, reduce the budget by two and three. I meant to say adjust the budget by two and three. Cause, cause three isn't a reduction.
Right.
So it should be to adjust the budget by two and three and then keep the, uh, number one in the budget. So I just think those two words. I'll make a motion to move into, uh, executive session. Uh, consider finding a premature disclosure of matters linked to negotiating real estate purchase options to place the city or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Make a motion to enter executive session to just real estate purchases, purchase options. Um, I'll inviting in the city manager, just the city manager, and with the council.
Is there a second? Second by Eric, motion by Tim, second by Eric, going into executive sessions. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we'll give everyone five minutes to pick up and head out.